Madam Mayor, can we do the countdown? Counting down ten, nine, eight, seven, six, five, four, three, two, and one.
Welcome to the Brisbane City Council's special meeting of December fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. I'm calling this meeting to order at seven thirty-four P M. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. City Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Cunningham.
I am here. I am muting my video because of bandwidth issues. Thank you.
Councilmember Lentz.
Here.
Councilmember Mackin.
Here.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Here.
And Mayor Davis.
Here.
City Attorney, report out from closed session.
Yes, Madam Mayor. Council met in closed session at seven P M. On item A D, which was real property negotiation, council provided direction to the city manager. On council, on item E, anticipated litigation, council provide a direction to the city attorney's office. On council F, conference with legal counsel, that was an update on a pending action involving county and cities in the counties against Monsanto. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. We now have the adoption of the agenda. I'd like to close in honor of Peter Grace and Trevor Toll.
I'll make a motion to approve that. Agenda.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Aye.
Councilmember Lentz.
Aye.
Councilmember Mackin.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
And Mayor Davis.
Aye.
We'll now move on to item B, Hip Housing Calendar. And Napoló Gómez Somer is here to make a presentation to us. Welcome.
Hey, good evening, folks. Y'all hear me okay? All right, lovely to be here. I am gonna stick, I'm gonna stick to the script, because I tend to go off script. So it's lovely to be here, here as a proud board member representing Hip Housing. Many of you know Hip Housing. Since nineteen seventy-two, Hip Housing has been helping low-income San Mateo County residents to find and maintain housing in one of the most expensive places to live in the county. Here, San Mateo County. Hip Housing is listed in all twenty-one housing elements in San Mateo County, including ours. And as a trusted affordable housing partner, last year, we worked with over thirty-two hundred individuals in the county and housed twelve-hundred-and-forty-one people throughout the county. In Brisbane alone, we received eleven calls this past year for support, and we work with fourteen people currently here. I think we have the opportunity to do more, and I think you all know that. And we were supporting individuals through our home-sharing program here. On behalf of Hip Housing, and I'd like to thank Honorable Mayor Madison Davis and the members of the council for your enduring support for our organization. And as a symbol of appreciation, we have our calendar, which I think you all know about very well, and maybe our community members know as well. So each year, we ask children from kindergarten through fifth grade to submit their entries on what home means to them, right? So that's the artwork there, and we choose thirteen. So we got twelve months out of the year, and then we got the cover. I actually like all of them. I can't really land on one. I think there's just some beautiful expression there. And I'd love to see some more participation from children here in Brisbane. I think we have an opportunity to promote that, and I'm looking forward to doing that in the year ahead. We had over three hundred and, three hundred and twenty calendar entries this past year. So it's pretty good, but I think we can do more. So I hope you enjoy it, and I'm gonna keep this very short. If anyone wants to hear about Hip Housing, wants to talk to me, I'm readily available, and I think you know how to get ahold of me. So thank you.
Thanks, Napoló.
Yeah. You're welcome.
Okay, we'll now move on to item C, Volunteers of the Year and Youth Volunteer of the Year Award. This is very exciting, and I will start with our Youth Volunteer of the Year. A proclamation of the City of Bris, of the City Council of the City of Brisbane recognizing Sagar Rajan for his volunteer service to the City of Brisbane. Whereas, Sagar Rajan is being acknowledged as the recipient of the twenty-twenty-three Youth Volunteer of the Year Award. And whereas, he has strengthened our community through selfless service, unwavering dedication, and commitment to helping others. And whereas, Sagar has spent his summer breaks volunteering as a leader in training at Brisbane camps. There, he worked with community members aged four through twelve and assisted with leading enriching social, creative, and physical activities. He distinguished himself as a caring, understanding, and patient leader. And whereas, he is currently in his sixth year as a member of the Bris, of Brisbane's Youth Advisory Committee and his second year as the YAC president. He has played an integral role in the success of the YAC, contributing immensely towards its growth, growth over the past six years. The expansion of the YAC is due in large part to his genuine and charismatic nature, along with his passion for assisting community members of all ages. And whereas, Sagar was instrumental in establishing the weekly technology assistance program for seniors ages fifty-five and up at the Sunrise Room. He helps seniors in the community with a variety of technological challenges by troubleshooting and problem-solving, and simultaneously engages in meaningful conversations with the seniors he is assisting. And whereas, he is serving as Oceana High School's Senior Academic Council Representative, is a student trustee member for Jefferson Union High School District, attended Boy State in Sacramento, and is both secretary and treasurer for Region Four of the California Student Council Association. And whereas, Sagar assists community members and neighbors with pets or household needs, provides academic tutoring for younger students, volunteers at citywide events, participates in nationwide climate discussions, and also serves as a steward of the city. And now, therefore be it resolved that we take this opportunity to express our gratitude to Sagar for demonstrating a strong commitment to helping others, making a difference in our community, and for serving as an example to his peers. Many congratulations to Sagar Rajan on being named the twenty-twenty-three Youth Volunteer of the Year, dated this fourteenth day of December, twenty twenty-three. I have a proclamation for you. And I'm sure your parents would love to come up and take a photo, so feel free. This is for you. And then I'm sure Caroline would like us to pose for a photo with you as well.
Come on up and get a picture. Families welcome.
I would like to say a few words, actually. Today, I wrote a recommendation letter for Sagar for Stanford University. And, yes. I know our whole community is rooting for you. And I have had the pleasure of reviewing a lot of scholarship applications for many students in Brisbane. And so I've looked at a lot of, you know, resumes of extracurricular activities and great point averages, and I have been hard-pressed to find a student with your achievements. Sagar has taken ten courses already. He hasn't graduated high school. He's taken ten courses already at different colleges. Skyline College, College of San Mateo, UC Berkeley, and Kenyatta College. He's taken, that's just astounding to me. There are many students that take AP classes. He's already taken ten college courses. He's gotten an A in every single one. He's enrolled for three more courses in spring twenty twenty-four. And the level at which he participates in his community, as well as so many different clubs and other volunteering opportunities, I do not know when you sleep. It never. I, 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 I look at this, and I'm like, wow, this really puts me to shame. When I was in high school, I thought I was doing great. And so, you know, I want to encourage you to continue with everything that you're doing, and we'd love to see you around Brisbane, even once you're in college. And, you know, maybe one day, we'll be presenting you with the Adult Volunteer of the Year Award. So thank you so much for everything that you've done for our community. Okay, so we will now move on to our Volunteers of the Year, our Adult Volunteers of the Year. And I'd like to read a proclamation as well. A proclamation of the City Council of the City of Brisbane recognizing Camille and Mark Salmon for their volunteer service to the City of Brisbane. Whereas, Camille and Mark are dedicated community members who have demonstrated ongoing commitment to the City of Brisbane while acting with the purpose of community in mind and giving selflessly to others. And whereas, Camille has shown unwavering dedication to the Brisbane community for more than four decades as the founder of Brisbane Dance Workshop, consistently nurturing the creative and magical spirit in every student. She has shared her talent tirelessly with the city by dedicating countless hours towards inspiring youth in the field of performing arts. And whereas, Camille is a retired program director for the SF Arts Education Project, a nonprofit organization that places artists and residents in public schools. She is also a choreographer and associate director for the Event Players, a pre-professional children's musical theater company. And whereas, she served on the Board of Trustees for the Brisbane School District and is co-chair of SF Arts Providers Alliance and presently on the Leadership Committee for the California Arts Alliance. She was the inaugural recipient of the city's Arts Advocate Award, and she currently serves as the vice chair for the Public Art Advisory Committee, continually finding ways to support the Brisbane community. And whereas, Mark has been a dedicated member of the Brisbane Lions Club volunteering in numerous capacities over the past several decades. He is a quiet helper, often behind the scenes, but is willing to lend a helping hand whenever needed. And whereas, Mark has served as a chaplain for friends, family, and residents when needed. He is described by neighbors as a steady, patient, kind, and true craftsman. He has been instrumental in supporting the success of Brisbane Dance Workshop by constructing sets for performances. And whereas, Mark has shown commitment towards environmental sustainability by serving as a volunteer for the Mission Blue Nursery and supporting their conservation efforts. He helped neighbors in need following the early twenty-twenty-three storms, and his construction of the covered shelter for the Crossing Guard at B E S is an example of his small yet impactful contributions to the community. And whereas, Camille and Mark are known throughout the community for their contributions in many areas. And they embody the spirit of this award by generously giving their time, energy, and talents to improve the quality of life for Brisbane residents. And now, therefore be it resolved that after many decades of dedicated volunteering, we take this opportunity to express our gratitude to Camille and Mark Salmon for their tireless spirit, selflessness, and dedication to serving others. Many congratulations to Camille and Mark on being named the twenty-twenty-three Volunteers of the Year, dated this fourteenth day of December, twenty twenty-three. These are for you. Double fisting here. And I'm sure that Caroline would like a photo, if you wouldn't mind. I know it. Okay, well, we will, we can move, we can move around you. I want to thank you both for everything that you've done for Brisbane. For those that don't know, I enrolled in B D W at the age of three, and Camille was a really big part of my childhood. She taught me not just about performing or dancing, but she taught me about confidence. She taught me about using my voice. She taught me about professionalism. And I always looked up to you, Camille, as a mentor and somebody that I wanted to emulate. And I thank you for providing B D W to the children of Brisbane and everything else you've done. And for Mark, Mark is just always a presence in Brisbane. Any Lions event, you'll, you'll see him there. He's someone who always lends a helping hand and never expects any type of recognition. Somebody came to me, and they said, who's the volunteer of the year? And I said, I can't tell you, and it's, you know, a closely guarded secret. And they said, just give me a hint. And I said, it's somebody who you would be shocked that hasn't received this award yet. And that person said, Mark Salmon. And I just, I just smiled, and I had to turn away because I didn't want to give it away. So the two of you really exemplify what it means to be the volunteer of the year, and we are so excited to honor you. And I should have done this at the last round, but I'd love to open it up. If there's anything that any other members of the council would like to say, feel free.
All right, I'll start. Camille, you know, I remember our girls going through the Brisbane Dance Workshop and, and how serious you were to, to train the kids in performing arts. And, you know, they, they, you know, when, when our girls would come home, they would say, boy, Camille, she's so tough. But, you know, she, but, but she really cares, and she's teaching us so much. And, you know, I, you know, I have just like really good memories of you talking to, to the parents and all the people who watched the, the, you know, the performances. Because you would get out there, and you would just really just talk from the heart about, about why it's so important for kids to be active and to have art be in their lives. And then that's just been, you know, something that has been part of your life forever. And, and we're just blessed that, you know, you just shared that, you know, with this community for so many years. And, you know, Mark, you know, I, I've, I've really admired your, your, your commitment to, to helping, you know, when, when the call was needed. You know, you, you never shied away from any situation that, that required volunteers to, to roll up their sleeves and, and get involved. And, you know, and, and like, like it was said, you know, you, you're very humble. And, you know, that, that says a lot about your character and about why you do what you do, because you do it for the right reasons. And, you know, you, you, you've been a great role model for all of us. So thank you, and you're very deserving of, of the acknowledgement.
I have to be careful what I say because your sister is not gonna be able to get through this meeting if we say too much. I can see she's emotionally wrought. I think a lot of the, the strong points have already been mentioned. I would just say, when we look at the spirit of this award, you both exemplify to the detail every reason why we have this, and thank you for all you've done. Nobody has any idea the hours you've spent. It's, it's even hard to fathom, but from the bottom of our hearts, deepest appreciation, well deserved.
It's all been said, you guys are what epitomizes what living in a small town and knowing and caring about your neighbors are, and working to give everybody a hand up and a chance to shine, and thank you so much.
Thank you.
My turn.
Karen.
Okay, it's all been said, and I do have one thing to add. It's about time. Thank you so much to both of you. It's about time. Thank you.
Okay, so I know there's members of the audience who are probably here for those two things. So if you want to bow out now, no offense taken, you're, you're welcome to leave. We'll leave a little moment there for, for you to scooch out the back. And with that, I will move to oral communications number one. And as a reminder, this is for items that are not on the agenda. Is there anyone wishing to speak at this time? Okay, Michelle Salmon. You have three minutes.
I spoke a closed session about the property negotiation, and I really am adamant about us not selling that property. It is public property that leads access to the mountain and is really a safety buffer for our town. And the property negotiator that's negotiating with you is a known developer. And it concerns me because it's right next to the Habitat, and it is a heavy fire zone. And I don't, I think that there should be way more transparency when it comes to selling Brisbane's public property. I understand the need to have negotiations in, in closed session, but the decision to have a negotiation, I think should be in the public view. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak at this time?
I see no hands raised, Madam Mayor.
Okay. We'll move on to the consent calendar. Do I have a first and a second to adopt consent calendar items D through I?
So move.
I'll second.
Roll call vote, Councilmember Cunningham.
Aye.
Councilmember Lentz.
Aye.
Councilmember Mackin.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
And Mayor Davis.
Aye.
We have new business, item J, election of new mayor and mayor pro temp.
Madam Mayor, if, if I can make some comments before we call the question or if you want to have discussion? Okay, thank you. You know, the Council Reorg is a time for passing the torch, where we build on the milestones of the previous year and provide leadership opportunity for a fellow council member to serve as our mayor. To be appointed mayor is not only a great honor for the one serving in that role, it also provides a reflection of the council's commitment to empowerment and embracing of different styles and perspectives. By giving every member the opportunity to serve in that role, we say to the community that we are fair and respectful of the contributions that all members provide to our city. The last time I was mayor was two thousand sixteen. That was eight years ago. During that time period, Madison, you have served twice as the mayor. And Terry, if you're appointed tonight as the mayor, you too will have served twice during that eight-year period, while I have been bypassed during that time. If this was happening to someone else on the council, I would speak up for them too. It is the council's prerogative to use the guidelines we have created to choose the next mayor and mayor pro temp, or to not use the guidelines when the majority wants to exclude. Though we have the right to do so, does this mean we should? During our workshop last month, you offered me the position of mayor pro temp. It was the same offer you gave me two years ago, but did not honor the pathway to being mayor. The positions of mayor and mayor pro temp should be given freely, without strings attached. We are all elected by the public to serve. We all come into this position the same way. So the standards for choosing our leadership positions should be universal and fair. By having standards that embrace diversity and different perspectives, we embrace a larger swath of our community. It says, if you're different, that's fine with us. Welcome to the party. At the workshop, we also talked a lot about trust. Trust is not about loyalty or constantly meeting someone else's expectations. Trust is not something that is earned, but rather something you're willing to give. It's about being vulnerable, putting down one shield, and acknowledging someone else's right to express themselves in a respectful manner. It's about letting go of grudges, being self-reflective, and understanding that different points of view can be attributes rather than risks. It's this type of engagement that inspires me to serve in public office. I'm expressing my desire to serve as the mayor of our city. I have the time and motivation to do so. We should be a council that provides the opportunity for all five members to represent Brisbane as mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone like to make a motion or say something?
Madam Mayor, I have a motion to make, but I'd like to make a statement first.
Okay.
I'm gonna speak to you tonight from the heart. I'm speaking for myself alone. And I think what I have to say is very important. Every single word is important. I'll speak slowly for that reason. We are at a critical juncture for Brisbane with major development projects and a lawsuit with High-Speed Rail. The council must work together on this. The public must be included and heard as well. Therefore, my vote for mayor and for mayor pro temp will be cast only, only, only for council members who've agreed not to negotiate independently from the council with outside parties. And with that, I would like to nominate Mayor Pro Temp, Terry O'Connell, to be our next mayor, with Councilmember Karen Cunningham to be Mayor Pro Temp.
Before we get to that, I do have a public comment. Nancy Loxamana, you have three minutes.
I would like to reserve my comment till after your vote. Is that possible?
You can say it at oral communications number two.
I would like to say my comment after the vote. If that's when I can speak, I'd like to, I'd like to hear all of your points of views, but I'd like to hear how your vote goes first.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, you, you can come back up at oral communications number two.
That's fine.
Okay.
I, I would like it to pertain back to this issue, so I'm not sure why you wouldn't allow me to speak after your vote.
Because it's the order in which we do things. We take council questions.
Am I the only person to talk now?
I don't know. I haven't asked for more, but if you would like to speak after we vote, that would happen at oral communications number two. You can do that, or you can speak now.
You know what? I will speak now, because I think it's pertinent to say something.
Okay, please speak now.
I, this, this conversation came up last year. It was very, very divisive between Cunningham, O'Connell, Davis, Mackin against Councilmember Lentz. He has a seven-year gap, I hear it's eight-year gap in being mayor, despite being vice mayor for two years. You want to talk about trust. There's a growing number of people who don't trust you, and it's because of your inaction in issues regarding the Marina, the Bank of America Building, and the shuttered businesses in the village and on Visitation Avenue. Believing that we need to have somebody with the full agreement of the council is the same action that you all took last year in being in collusion to have the one and only candidate who is running against two incumbents to be picked apart by the community because two of you decided to put up signs and only be in support of each other. You all do not represent the diversity of this town, inclusive of Lentz or the region or the neighborhoods of the entire town. There hasn't been one person that has been able to become a council member from the ridge. That's not what the state is doing right now. And I'm encouraging you to consider communication from all parts of the, of the town. And I'm encouraging you to consider communication from all parts of the town and become more diverse, and you're not. And the way you become more diverse is by including people, encouraging them to run to council, and being able to be supportive of their ideas. And you're not doing that. You're setting an awful precedent here. And I think that the idea that you elect Ms. O'Connell, Councilwoman O'Connell, just because she's next in line when you denied him twice is really obvious that this divisive nature continues. Thank you.
Thank you. I do have a hand raised from Roland. Let's let our city clerk stop the timer and reset.
Go ahead, Roland.
There we go. Okay, there we go. So I'm basically going to reiterate what I said at the workshop. And one thing that really concerned me about the workshop is that apparently I was the only one in attendance. And as of right now, I'm not yet a resident of Brisbane. When you get to this kind of situation where basically your constituents are not agreeing with decisions being made by the council, one option to you is to put a measure on the ballot whereby the mayor will be elected by the residents of Brisbane, not by the city council. And at that point in time, the mayor will be elected to that seat to a period of four years, just like the council members are right now. And that would basically move the conversation and the decision to the people of Brisbane, who will then be in a position to decide for themselves who they think the best person will be to lead them in the next four years. And that concludes my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, Roland. Is there anyone else wishing to speak at this time?
Madam Mayor, one note for the record. We received council correspondence from Jennifer, Ken, Cassandra, and Sebastian Biscay regarding this item. They said that "It's been very disheartening to watch politics play out on the national stage over the past few years. As citizens, we have continuously watched parties fight over power and influence rather than truly representing the best interests of our nation. My children are now keenly aware of the difference between public servants and politicians. We do not want to see this jockeying locally. We see enough of it on the nightly news. We are hopeful that Councilmember Lentz will be appointed mayor for the next rotation. It is simply his due."
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak at this time? Okay, so I have a motion on the table. And I will go ahead and second that motion.
Roll call vote. Councilmember Cunningham.
Aye.
Councilmember Lentz.
No.
Councilmember Mackin.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
And Mayor Davis.
Aye.
Okay, and I believe we now move on to oaths at this time. Do you want to do Karen and Terry separately? Because it might be hard with Zoom. Yeah. Okay, are you okay with that, Councilmember Cunningham?
Sure, unless you want me to do it when I get back next week.
Yeah, that's what she's saying.
Oh, okay. I couldn't hear that, sorry.
But would we still need the action to happen to the...
No? Okay, so...
O'Connell, he's already taken the oath of office, so it's ceremonial for the vice. Thank you.
Okay, so we will just do Councilmember O'Connell right now.
I, Terry O'Connell, do solemnly affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that I take this obligation freely, without any mental reservations or purpose of evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter. Thank you so much. So thank you. Thank you very much for the trust that the council has put in me and for the support that I hope to garner with the rest of the term here. I really appreciate it. It is an honor to be made the mayor. With that, I am going to recognize outgoing mayor Madison Davis for her service. This is a proclamation of the City Council of the City of Brisbane reorganizing and honoring Mayor Madison Davis for her service to the City of Brisbane for the year of 2023. Whereas Madison Davis served as the mayor of the City of Brisbane from December 15, 2022, to December 14, 2023, and whereas during her year as mayor, she presided over city council meetings, workshops, and public events, always speaking from the heart and always a champion of community empowerment and the next generation. Whereas New Year's Eve, Brisbane experienced a storm event which brought mud, rocks, and even boulders down San Bruno Mountain and overflowed our storm drains. With her steadfast leadership, the city responded quickly and worked as a community to keep the roads clean and our neighborhoods safe. And whereas she hosted important citywide events marking important milestones and achievements in the city, she presided over the ribbon-cutting events for the installation of an 8.5-kilowatt solar photovoltaic system on the Mission Blue facility, the completion of the Crocker Trails resurfacing project, resulting in an all-season surface for all ages of visitors, including those using strollers and wheelchairs, and the expansion of the Bristol Myers Squibb Shoreline Campus at 1200 Sierra Point Parkway. Whereas during her tenure as mayor, the City of Brisbane was designated as an age-friendly city by AARP, the nation's largest nonprofit, nonpartisan organization dedicated to empowering Americans 50 and older to choose how they live as they age. The Brisbane City Council also adopted a housing element, an affordable housing strategic plan, introduced the Dark Skies Ordinance, and hired a firm to develop the first public art master plan for the City of Brisbane. And now, therefore be it resolved that after a year of dedicated service as mayor of the City of Brisbane, we thank her for her energy and passion in making the City of Brisbane a better place to live, thrive, and prosper.
Thank you.
Dated today, December 14, 2023. And with that, I would like to give her her gavel proclamation.
Thank you.
And also her other wall art.
My goodness.
And I just want to let her have some outgoing remarks.
What a way we started this year, right? I was like, wow, it's only been a week. And here, half of San Bruno Mountain is falling off. That was really, I think, the response to that was, you know, a collaborative effort with so many different departments of our staff. So I want to thank everyone who stepped up, who was planning to celebrate New Year's Eve with their family and have days off. And everyone just jumped in and lent an extra hand. And so much of Park and Rec, who this is not even their, you know, forte, came in, filled sandbags. So we can't do it without the support of all of our staff. You are what makes Brisbane run day in and day out. And I want to thank my council colleagues for a collaborative year. And I thank the City of Brisbane for allowing me to serve you not only as the mayor, but as a city council member. And I look forward to continuing serving you for the next three years. Can we move on?
Would any of the other council members want to say anything?
Spare me.
I won't make a long speech. I will just say thank you very, very much. It's been a very eventful year. And I appreciate your leadership at the helm, Madison. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you for serving.
And with that, we will take a short break. Um, good birthday was.
Um, counting down five, four, three, two, and one.
Welcome back to the city council meeting. And thank you. And we are going to move on to item M, which is city managers' report on upcoming activities.
No, no report tonight.
Thank you. And then we have Mayor Council Matters. And this is a confirmation of city manager recruitment subcommittee. Is there a staff report, please?
Yes, real quickly, the council earlier this year had appointed council members O'Connell and Davis to be the subcommittee. And so the purpose of this is to confirm or to change, depending on the council's wishes. Terry Black of Terry Black and Company, who is our recruiter, has requested to work with the subcommittee on the development of the brochure. So there would be likely a meeting in the next couple of weeks.
And, and I did, we did speak to staff and they wanted the continuity of the current subcommittee if preferable, correct?
That's, I think, probably beneficial at this point in terms of the process. So I would, if it's the council's pleasure, I would suggest you do that, yeah.
Okay. And then does the council have any discussion on this?
Oh, I would just like to say to Karen, Karen, if you want to do it, I'm happy to yield. Or if we want to, you know, heed Terry's, Terry Black's request to have the continuity, then I'm happy to stay on. But I don't want to step on anyone's toes.
Sure. I think in the, in the essence of continuity and time, that we should leave things as they are. Thank you.
And council member Lentz or Mackin?
That's fine with me.
I'm okay.
Okay. Do we have any comments from the public on this matter?
There are none, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Can I get a first and second to continue the subcommittee for recruitment, city manager recruitment?
I'll make that motion. Okay, I'll second.
We have a first and a second roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Aye.
Councilmember Lentz?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Mackin?
Aye.
And Mayor O'Connell?
Aye. That brings us to item O, which is the countywide assignments and subcommittee reports. Who would like to start? Anyone have? I see that the arts subcommittee did meet.
I have a report. Councilmember Cunningham and I met with the Public Art Advisory Committee to discuss future placement of fire hydrants on city-owned property. I'm pretty sure I reported out on this before. But the four designated areas are going to be at the entrance to the Quarry Road Trail. Kind of at, there's like a sign there and there's kind of a picnic area to spread around in that area. And then there's going to be kind of the main plug preserve, so to speak, near where we have the Christmas tree at the community park. And then there's going to be fire hydrants for Firth Park. And then there are already some existing at the, in the back of the bathrooms at the community park. And we have 20 hydrants that need to be refurbished. So these were the ones that have come off of the plug preserve and ones that have been just discontinued in general in the city. And we're creating a catalog. There are some hydrants that are for historical figures, and we don't know which historical figures they are. So we are tracking down their identities, and then we worked on kind of grouping them. Oh, and we're actually, sorry, there's going to be a few hydrants out here in front of City Hall. There's kind of across from where the Volunteer of the Year Rock is, there's kind of these step-up planters with nothing really of value in them. And so we decided to put some there because there's one that's all blue with white stars. There's one that's white with the City of Brisbane logo, the old one, the old logo. And we thought it would be perfect to have a grouping in front of City Hall. And then eventually, we will also paint the 10 blank ones. So that's my report. We're going to, we were supposed to go out to the corp yard to take a look at the hydrants so we can work on grouping, but it was, we had to reschedule that. So we're going to reconvene on this in January.
Thank you, any other reports? I will say that tomorrow night is the Council of Cities voting. I looked over the agenda, and there really are no contested seats for the Council of Cities, so I don't think there's any direction I need to get on that vote from the council. I was, I did talk with Councilmember Big Stick from Pacifica tonight. He is interested in applying for the Domestic Violence Committee alternate. And I said I would put his name forward unless there's an objection from any members of the council as a motion from the floor. So that's the only report out I have. And then we are going to move on to written communications.
Council received communications from the Bousquet family on December 14 regarding item J.
Thank you. And moves us on to oral communications number two. Are there any members of the public wishing to make a public comment? Michelle Salmon.
Two things. One, I'm very concerned about the trees at the marina. Some of the ones that are not near the water's edge, like the poplars, are also showing some really severe signs and are dying. And I have raised the issue that I am concerned that the cap may have some breach in the cap. So I really think that we should take a good, long look at what's going on out there. Cap is 40 years old. We've had an extensive problem over the years with ground squirrels, which is the number one cause of cap failure. And I just think we should take a good, long look at what's going on. And the other thing I wanted to point out pursuant to another oral communication was earlier. We have had a councilperson from the ridge, and that would be Lori Lou. And so it's just pointing that out. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public online? I see Roland's hand is raised.
Roland, go ahead.
Oh, thank you, thank you. Madam Mayor, first of all, congratulations on your appointment. I did want to speak on the City Manager Recruitment earlier. My, my head was up, but for some reason I was not called. So first of all, I really want to thank the council for this extraordinary workshop that you had with Terry Black and basically laying out what the council expectations were. And I'm extremely pleased to report to you that I do have personally a candidate that checks every single one of the boxes that you laid out out there. So immediately after the meeting, I reached out to Terry Black and Company, and I will read you what the response was. The response was, was, "Thank you for reaching out to us and for your recommendation. Our lead recruiter will contact the person once the position opens." I, I don't really understand what that means. Is there some other way maybe to do something with HR ahead of time instead of waiting for these brochures? And I understand I'm under general public comment right now, so you're not allowed to respond to this. Thank you, Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. That concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Roland. I, I just will say that we're going through the recruitment process and that we have a timeline. And once the recruitment opens, I'm sure that that person will be contacted. And certainly, any person who is interested would be able to reach out to the recruiter once the position is posted and out. But thank you. With that, do I have any other members of the public who'd like to speak? Seeing none?
Yeah, you know, Terry, I'd like to just make a, just a quick comment. And I just wanted to.
Certainly.
I just wanted to thank the people who, who spoke tonight. I thought the comments from Nancy were, you know, things that we should consider. I, I liked the comment from Roland. And I also just wanted to thank the Bousquet family for their letter out. That it was, it was just very touching and, and nice, so thanks.
Yes, thank you. We always appreciate participation. And with that, we had a couple really tragic deaths here in Brisbane. And with that, I'd like to close in memory of Peter Grace and of Trevor Towell. Meeting's adjourned.